There, that there. Six o'clock, I'll call this meeting to order. Tonight's invocation is done by Commissioner Way. Pleasure of allegiance by Mayor Pro Tim Kaczynski. Mr. Way.
First gracious having the following, we come to this evening and ask for your good graces. Be with us, help us and guide us as we go about making decisions for our neighbors and our community. Lord, please be with those in the community that need your uplifting hand. Also be with those along our coastline that are experiencing difficulty to do the storm that's coming through. In your most holy name, we pray. Amen.
Stand if you can. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberate and innocent. That is for all.
All right, before we do roll call, please silence your, or cut off your cell phones, if you would please, not only on the desk but out in the audience too. All right, we move to the roll call. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Wilkins.
Here.
Commissioner Albright.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Kaczynski.
Present.
Commissioner Gleason.
Here.
Commissioner Way.
Present.
Mayor Willer.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, item four, approval of agenda. Is there any additions or subtractions to the agenda?
Make a motion the agenda be approved.
Motion is made by Commissioner Gleason. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those no. Motion carries five to zero. All right, we move down to item five, discussion items. First one is introduction swearing in of a new patrol lieutenant, Seth Bryant. You'll join me up front.
Left hand on my shoulder, right hand. Repeat after me. Aye, Seth Jacob Bryant.
Aye, Seth Jacob Bryant.
Do solemn and swear.
Do solemn and swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of Fort Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
That I will be alert and vigilant.
That I will be alert and vigilant.
To enforce the criminal laws of this state.
To enforce the criminal laws of this state.
That I will not be influenced.
That I will not be influenced.
In any manner or account.
In any manner or account.
Of personal bias or prejudice.
Of personal bias or prejudice.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
Execute the duties.
Execute the duties.
Of my office as a patrol lieutenant.
As my office as a patrol lieutenant.
With the Creveport Police Department.
With the Creveport Police Department.
According to best of my skill.
According to the best of my skill.
Abilities and judgment.
Abilities and judgment.
So we got the guy. Congratulations.
Always, sir, you're welcome.
That would have been nice to know before we started. Okay, let's see. Item five B, introduction of new city planner, Dustin Davis. Mr. Frangos.
Yeah, not nearly so involved, we don't swear, we don't give him the time, we don't give him the bag. He's a planner, he works with us, we're glad to have him. Dustin comes to us from the private sector, and this is his first job in the public sector as a planner. I would introduce to you Dustin.
Name, rank and serial number.
Aye. I want to thank Creveport for everybody who's been just a planner. I want to thank Mike for hiring me, obviously, and I'm looking forward to it. I think Mike mentioned I came over from the property sector, and it's something I wanted to do for, I don't think since I graduated college, I haven't seen what it brings.
We're glad to have you here. Commissioner Way.
I was just going to say that I was able to review your resume, and I'm looking forward to seeing whatever you can do to help us with beautification too.
I'm pretty good at it.
I saw that, I saw that, especially coming from the Boone area.
Yeah, I graduated from North Carolina State University, and I think 2019. And since then, I had applied for English management, and it worked out for a reason. And I worked in the private sector, did work for a private sector planner, so most of it's been more engineering, landscape architecture, but still very comfortable with this, just looking forward to it.
Anybody else have any questions or comments? Commissioner Wilkins. Welcome.
Lots of work for you, so just drop in. Definitely good.
All right. We move now to five C, appointment of Keisha Bruce Meyer Brown to the Board of Adjustment. City manager.
I'm delighted to report to the board that Keisha Bruce Meyer Brown has agreed to serve as an active member of the Creveport Board of Adjustments. As you all know, we've been down a number of two in the past. They meet when they have to, but not on a regular basis, only because of lack of agenda items. With this appointment by the board, there will now be a total of five members, and only one vacancy, which is the alternate seat.
Let me get to page on that. Let me step, page seven. Make a motion we appoint Keisha to the Board of Adjustment. All right, his motion is made by Commissioner Gleason. Any further discussion? Let's see, let me write all this down. Not hearing any, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those no. All right, Mike, if you will notify her. Let me get to my next part here. All right, we're. Okay, thank you. Um, let's see where I am now. Um, okay, five D, monthly financial report, ending August 31st, 2024. Mr. Fines.
Good evening, Mayor Bullock. Tonight, I'd like to forehand a free lunch, as long as you're looking forward to the month of August. We're saying, so your revenue routine, first run of annual package for the simple year. Annual package routine, we received debt first, scheduled lives in this month, and we'll be posted in the NCO next month. Thank you for that, always, you can see the breakdown of the recreation revenues under sale and servicing. The total percentage of revenues collected to date, 5%. General fund expenditures, we're at 21%. Now, of course, those are mainly the one-time expenditures that we actually pay off in the end, that's just a supplement. Not really insurance or compensation, that is paid out to the users. If you come down to school board revenue, 14% collected. For expenditures, 14% spent. Power bill, revenue, high-power bill revenue that goes over, they exchange the income. We will receive deferred outages, we'll have to consider a couple months. And then we come down to power bill expenditures, we're at 3%. One more thing, we should update, we have to, before I debate, the articles of site and master, two days, when they go, site testing, from that before. Know the site numbers, you there, so now they can stay together, so we can be ready for, to keep to October 31st.
Any questions for the city finance director? Just thank you, Lee. Thanks, sir. All right, we move now to five E, Campo Presentation Blueprint for Safety. Mr. Barclay.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the board, Carl Barker, city engineer. As you know, Creveport is a member of the capital area that's called the planning organization in Campo for sure. As March of this year, I attended a Campo meeting, introduced a regional transportation safety plan, code named Blueprint for Safety. In June 9th, another meeting, that was exclusively with the Randall County stakeholders. We reviewed Randall County's price set, tons, discussed local concerns that we had, and all the opportunities for improvement. I'd like the board to hear more about the safety issues, the residents in Campo, so we introduce Kenneth Whitrow, the senior finance, senior transportation planner.
Thank you, Carl. Good afternoon. And Representative Buck the Kepler and this planning organization, we take it as a privilege, and I take it as a privilege, to be here to give you this presentation. We're working on with Carl and Mike to service this region, which includes Wake County, and sort of Randall, Franklin, Johnson, Parnet, and now Chatham County, in terms of improving transportation and transportation system. Now, before you begin the Blueprint for Safety, and as you notice, this is the vague one portion of the Blueprint for Safety. The process had begun earlier this calendar year, and we have had, since then, a series of events and actions that are taking place to promote the Blueprint for Safety. So let me just go ahead and just give you the information as to why we're doing this. Note in Campo that between 2018 and 2022, there were 195,000 total crashes on the roadway in this region. Light of growth is occurring, you can imagine that, again, we're taking into account a six-county region. The other thing that's important to note is that of that, over 2,700 of those crashes involve injured drivers, passengers, pedestrians and bicyclists. The more facts portion to this, of course, in light of that, well, over 650 persons lost their lives due to a roadway crash in this area. And these are to note, to note, some of our loved ones, the people whom we're familiar with that have experienced this in the region. So we want to address that. One of the things that's occurred, of course, the United States Department of Transportation has looked at funding through the Infrastructure Investment Jobs Act to provide funds to address this in several ways, wanted to create a strategy to address that, as well as allow local governments and regional governments, as well as states, to create plans. And the state has just adopted a strategic highway plan. The next thing I want to note is with regard to the NPO, we leave along with the Durham Chapel Car Wheel, we're working on what's called Destination 2055, and we're trying to, with regard to all seven, both safety, health and wellbeing, and that's increased safety of travelers and residents, of public health, real good transportation source. So what does a transportation safety plan encompass? We have to have the vision, of course, to include that in the memo on transportation plan. It is stated, it's a retactory data. As mentioned by Carl, we have had stakeholders that were in nation's projects, we'll talk about that later. There is a reactive function and a proactive function, so we want to address what's occurring in terms of safety, but we need to be proactive and have a plan to move forward with it. We address it from mobile to mobile standpoint, in that it's not singular to roadways, but also incorporates bicycle pedestrian planning, transit planning, all factors where the public had access to transportation and transportation system. And so you look at short-termities as well as long-term goals. And so here are the significant goals that we want to bring forward to you in terms of five factors. So we want to encourage a reduction in fatalities and serious injuries on the transportation system in Campo. We do want to inform other regional efforts, increase the awareness of transportation safety and risk, so that's why we're bringing this to you all. Identify needs and recommended safety improvements, ensure consistency with the Highway Safety Improvement Plan and the United States Department of Transportation Funding Program, and follow what is called a safe system approach. And so one of the things that I want to note is not singular to the Capitol area NPO that is doing a safety plan per se. We have other entities that are doing that, such as the National Patrol Council, which used to be called RMLJ. The Durham Chapel Car Wheel NPO is developing a vision plan that is getting started. The city of Raleigh is just also getting started with a car to their safety action plan. And the town of Night Vale, in which county has enacted or has begun a safety plan back in the spring. So let's go into engagement, next slide please. So we have a series of events that, of course, incorporated a website. The survey just closed as of this morning, and we got over 1,600 more entries with regard to the survey. We had a kickoff summit, which was on March 14th. We've had a technical committee that met during the months of May and June, we'll talk about that later. We developed a toolkit for the public to access, so that you can gain understanding of what we're doing in terms of the plan. We are now doing the town boards, city council meetings, and so I and others apart of Campo have been engaged in this meeting. Again, thank you all so much for that. And we've had public engagement events, we'll get into those in a second. Again, with regard to the survey, that's no longer live as of today. You have a QR code where you can take the survey. That's the piece that I want to highlight for you all, of course, is the project website. I forgot, Google, for safety, you get to that through the Capitol area NPO. The summit, as mentioned before, we held that to out every county comments, and then basically we introduced the plan. We gave an initial review of the data that had been captured at the time. We're encouraging a safety culture, we want to make that more apparent in the region. We talked about how we're going to plan engagement, and we began, or conducted small group discussions as well. One of the things we want to note is that it's a top-down and bottom-up process here. All of our citizens will share responsibility in terms of encouraging safety. We want everybody to do their part, and we want people to understand how important it is. It's one thing to build a system, but it's important for people to have safe access to the system. Remember, just mentioning to you all, before we really established a safety program, we've had emphasis on safety improvements in this region, going back as early as the Watchman program back in 2012, 2013, that focused on how to improve safety in mainly the larger cities, such as the Raleigh, the Mckerry, Chapel Hill area. And we've looked at other ways in which we can improve safety, particularly as it relates to kids, where we have a safe route to school program at Capitol area NPO. There are various communities that have a safe route to school program, so that kids can get from home, the resident, to school, particularly on pedestrian and bicycle modes, safe. So that's one thing we wanted to do. So that's one thing we wanted to do, so that would work. The summit included participation by all elements that are true to community, from locally elected officials to planners, engineers, emergency, I mean, law enforcement, emergency response, transit media, as we were on CBS seventeen last week, and of course, we've been in other media platforms, and other persons. So all walk of life are encouraged to be engaged in safety. Next slide please. A technical meeting, a technical advisory team meeting were held, as said, in May and June, and we had been throughout the region. And of course, one that was held in Budner occurred on June seventh, and we've gone a whole gamut of the Capitol area NPO. And again, the toolkit shows, we had a recording that was done, a basic franchise overview with the survey, including terminal posters, and just various facets where people can access this digitally to get the thrust of what we're trying to do in terms of improving safety. And then we had our local engagement events, which were basically what we call pop-ups. Excuse me, our first one had begun in Wendell in the months of June. What you see visually is when we had the five forty fest, which was a public tech where a five forty, empty five forty walls, you know, fairly soon, we had people go, come out and basically just look at what's occurring or how the revenues went to function, and just technically had before we opened it up, with sometimes this month. And then we've had other things that we've been engaged in in terms of participation. And these are additional items, noting the Creedmore pop-up that had occurred on August third, and we just concluded with the last one on. So we ask general questions in light of this. So what does increasing safety look like? And the two questions we have for you are something to think about. What with safety issues, what are the safety issues are observed by the infrastructure and behavior that are perfect to this community? Each community is different, and so what stands out, what's different to roadway safety for your community as compared to larger regions? So those are some things we're trying to get out from the process. Next step, we've, excuse me, in the next phase, we're already eventually have this presented before the executive board in terms of a presentation. We'll have a summit phase two later on in the, in 2025, we'll have another seven technical advisory team meetings during the spring and summer, along with the additional board input, town board input, council meetings in phase two. And we'll eventually have a plan that will be vetted and reviewed by the executive board as well as you, as well as your board later, late summer, early fall of next year. So the reason why we're really engaged in our patch of this process is, of course, yes, nice to build roads, nice to build bicycle paths, it's other facets of transportation around. But if your person can't safely access the system, then it becomes problematic. And we don't want safety to be an active, we want safety to be a high priority beyond just building facilities. And the key thing, if you take, for example, one last thing I have to share with you, of course, if you take one facet, this is of course an automobile. The automobile has changed over the years, not just as something you just drive in, you have a lot of features that you find in a car that make it not only sellable, but also safe in terms of people utilizing it. So we want to have a plan and process by which citizens can access the transportation system safely, not just in cars, not just riding bicycle, but also in other ways, so that people can enjoy the quality of life. And of course, encourage, and that's why more people are coming to this part of the country to this stuff. We want to continue to stay involved, next slide. And I'm one of the contact persons, we partnered with BHB in this process, they have been at the forefront of safety planning, and they were the ones that worked with NCDOP to create the newly established highway safety plan that is enacted right now, and there are a lot of good things that are happening by it. So we're using this opportunity to really spread the word of the importance of safety, and note that that's going to be important along with having a good transportation process as well, and we want to advocate a transportation process as well. So that did my presentation for today, well, thank you all so much, and have any questions or comments?
Mr. Wilkins, any questions or comments?
No questions.
Mr. Albright.
Yes, my question is, once you get, now that you've gathered the data, what's your next step?
Well, the next step is, once we have the data completed, we're going to share that, and what we've come up with. Data we're capturing from what we have now analyzed from traffic, we've got, we've jabbed it through, and so we've got a call through what the public has basically said, and from that, taking that data and taking what the public has basically said, parse that in such a way to create a plan based on that. And what's going to happen is in the next phase, it's just going to go out to the technical advisory groups and the other groups that we have, to say, this is what is here, do you agree with it or not, what needs to be changed, get that corrected, and then have a final plan for adoption.
Mayor Protem.
So I was here the day that the team came, and they were right on Main Street, and they got some suggestions, and I talked to them about the Highway fifty-six dilemma that we're having, which is one of the biggest problems. But Granville County being this small little area in this division always concerns the mayor and I when we go to these meetings, that we're too small and we're not being looked at. But I know that that is not true, that Campo is working with all parties, and I thank you so much for coming and doing this in person with us.
Yeah, we're down there where we get the drippings at the bottom of the tub, we're even below that, so we're kind of down the drain. So it helps to know that somebody's taking us serious right now, we thank you for that. Mr. Gleason.
Thank you for your presentation.
Commissioner Way.
Thank you, sir, for your presentation. Working towards things with our other commissioners and would like to probably see mass transit of some nature come this way as far as, you know, even a bus ride to help alleviate some of the traffic, maybe going down Highway fifty or fifty-six, going to locations where a lot of us work. We live here, but unfortunately, there's not enough jobs here for us to be here. We have to go to Wake County and Durham and things like that, and it's just, there's no options for us to really, you know, hop on a bus or train or something out this way to go that way, and that's something I'd like to see us get in ground now.
Mr. Whitrow, we appreciate you coming in and being here today. Please let us know if we can be of any more service to you. Keep us informed. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
All right, we move now to item five F, which is replacement Christmas wreaths for Main Street, city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, commissioners. During the Christmas holiday season, there are thirty-three decorative wreaths placed along Main Street on utility poles in Creedmore. Seventeen are silhouette snowflakes, they're serviceable and will continue to be used. The remaining sixteen candle wreaths are shown, showing considerable wear and recommended for replacement due to age and deterioration. In the FY twenty twenty-five budget cycle, the Public Works Department recommended a replacement of sixteen candle wreaths. I approved and recommended that to the board, and which was subsequently approved at your June fourth, twenty twenty-four legislative meeting. I have given you a few attachments in the package that provide additional detailed information, which include pictures of the current and proposed replacements. Competitive prices were obtained by our Public Works Director Steve Edwards from Mosca Design of Youngsville, a local vendor, Creative Displays of Kansas City, Kansas, and Holiday Outdoor Decorations from the state of Mississippi. Mosca Design submitted two options, sixteen wreaths with LED lights only totaling ten thousand seven hundred and thirty-two dollars, and a proposal for sixteen wreaths with LED lights and ornaments totaling fifteen seven oh one. Mosca Design is a local supplier for governmental agencies and a longtime supplier for the city of Creedmore, is being recommended for the purchase of the LED lights and ornaments for a more complete and plush decorative total look for fifteen seven oh one. During the day when the lights are off, they will also appear to be much more festive with ornaments and things, even though they're not lit. The large red bows, we chose not to buy from Mosca because we think we can get them locally cheaper than a hundred and fifteen dollars each. And I'd like to publicly thank Steve Edwards for his upfront work, research, and recommendation on this matter. But we're asking tonight for a motion to approve the purchase of sixteen replacement wreaths from Mosca Design Youngsville, at a cost not to exceed fifteen thousand seven hundred and one dollars and seventy-six cents.
So, oh, before we understand the motion, is the examples that you've given us down here, are you talking about interchanging them, or was it one particular one?
Okay, if you go to page forty-one, you will see at the top of that the snowflake wreaths that will be maintained and kept and put back up. Right below that is the candle wreaths, which are outdated, worn, torn, et cetera. Page forty-two is the LED lights with the ornaments, that's what that's quoted out in the bow is separately at a hundred and fifteen dollars each. Page forty-three is the ultimate they proposed, which was the LED lights only with no ornaments. The last three items were just thrown in there for other, other possible options, it wasn't anything I liked, that's why I'm recommending the other one, but they're just silhouettes of a tree, a deer, a reindeer.
Leaking buck.
And a leaking buck, okay? So that's the only reason they were thrown in there, I don't like to, you know, show the board, only one option, so I threw in a few others.
That price included both?
That price does not, because I think we can get those bows locally for cheaper than a hundred and fifteen dollars each.
But it will contain the ornaments.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's.
Yes.
Mr. Albright.
So we're going to do half snowflakes and half wreaths, is that what?
No, ma'am, we're keeping all the snowflakes we've got, which are still good.
Okay.
We're just replacing the sixteen candle wreaths with these wreaths instead, so we're just purchasing sixteen.
Can we, can we spread some out, that we come, get down fifty-six, we can have a few down there?
We would have to buy more, we would have to install power on those poles, because they don't have power to power those wreaths up.
Okay.
That would have to be priced out and calculated and estimated to be able to go any further out.
When we get to the budget work session, first part of the year, that might be a good place.
That's what I was going to say, we need to include that, yeah.
Mayor Protem, any questions?
No, but with what Commissioner Albright just said, maybe we could look at holiday banners for the entrances on fifty-six. I mean, I'm not adding it to this one, I'm just saying, can we, can we check into that and maybe put a Christmas banner at the entrances on subdivisions? And then Davenport's going to want one, and Whitehall's going to want one, and.
Not sure if Steve's got holiday banners, but let's hear from him.
I don't have any holiday banners, we will give him one as a sample. There's electricity, I tell you, you know what I mean, it's just like, you got a lot of them, good luck. I don't need a receptacle, I know all about it.
I mean, we can look into them.
Yeah, if you'll do us a favor and kind of give us a little rundown on that.
Right now, we're just talking about the tree.
Right, right.
And we may not go with the banners, but at least this way we'll.
If we do go with the banners, can we do along fifty-six? That's what the commissioner was saying.
Yeah, I mean, wherever they want to go and put them, but we'd also have to make sure that we could get it done. We're going to talk about it this year, we need to see if we can get them ordered and in this year.
Yes.
If not, definitely by next year.
But if we can get this year, we should do that, I think.
Commissioner Gleason, any questions? Mr. Way.
I would definitely like to see some of the lighted decorations going up fifty-six in the city limits.
Yes, sir. All right, I have a motion on the floor to approve purchase sixteen replacement Christmas wreaths from Mosca Design Company of Youngsville.
With ornaments?
Yes.
With ornaments.
Okay.
At a cost not to exceed fifteen thousand seven hundred and one seventy-six. All in favor, say aye. I oppose no, motion carries.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, Steve.
Did we get the base?
We did not buy the fourteen thousand dollar base to sit a tree on, no, sir.
I would hope not. Okay, let's see.
No, ma'am, it's going to be twenty-six feet in the air, no, ma'am.
Madam Park, is the city attorney close by? Okay.
Ladies and gentlemen, I am going to stay off the video as we are on board report back nine years. My daughter is not to make.
Your man or her?
No, no, for that.
Okay, I was wondering.
But I just want, I just really have a whole lot on this agenda for you, I think you recall, at the legislative meeting, at the beginning of the conference, we discussed this briefly, following more sent out, the message to you all, I think as we discussed this, this is your opportunity to discuss the city's authority to enact force of low and moderate income, affordable housing assistance programs, and to consider whether pursuing some sort of program, something that the city would like to do, and if so, to kind of begin working through what, what sort of assistance or what sort of program the city likes to implement. So I think that, from my perspective anyway, this is kind of open-ended discussion for you all, based on, you know, the kind of the priorities that you all established, that even I can start to put together, kind of the bones or outline of a program for more detailed discussion, if you would choose to go in that direction in the first place.
All right, thank you, sir. Each of you should have a copy of the memorandum that he sent out, that was not included in your packet, so I had Mike printed out, you've seen it before, but I felt like it was important we had one in front of us at this meeting. Hopefully, everybody's had a chance to read through it. Mayor Protem, I'm going to start with you, do you have any discussion or anything that you would like to say or discuss about this?
Well, I just, there's an awful lot in this memorandum, and thank you so much, Kevin, for getting it for us. And in addition to all these examples of existing programs, we did get an email from Drew Cummings on all the programs the county already has in place for all the citizens of Granville County. So there's a ton of, to me, it seems like a ton of opportunities out there for our load of moderate income people needing assistance, and it's good to know.
All right, Mr. Way.
I would, I would definitely like to see if we qualify for some of the Department of Housing and Urban Development's grant programs for our citizens here in Creedmore. A few of us have already been hit with replacements of air conditioners and things of that nature in our own homes, so we can only imagine what some of the citizens in our community, especially some of our older citizens in some of the older houses, could probably utilize some of the grant money that's available if we can get a program like that here.
Now, are you referring to, and this is just my question, of getting something like this from the state, or developing something like this through the city?
It would be through the city, but we would do it with grant funds from federal government.
Not tax money?
Correct.
Well, not Creedmore tax.
Correct.
Okay, just clarify that for me, thank you, sir. Mr. Albright.
I agree with Commissioner Way about using some grant money, I'm not sure exactly what Commissioner Wilkins had in mind when he was thinking about this whole process. I've looked through the memo, and I noticed. I've looked through the memo, and I noticed, like, on the, next to the last page above conclusions and recommendations, like Wake Forest has housing and, you know, $90,000 in forgivable interest-free loans and things like that. I mean, that's not something that Creedmore could handle. That's a lot of money for little Creedmore to be able to, um, help with people. I mean, that, that's, I think these are just, I know Kevin gave us examples of what other communities do, and I think that's it. But, I mean, we would have to be, um, not skimpy, but we would have to be.
Frugal.
Frugal and, and financially responsible with what we were, what we were doing. And I think, I think that the, you know, the people that own the homes or that rent from the people should be the ones that, you know, help with, if the air conditioning's gone and someone's renting a home, then the renter needs to pay for those things.
The landlord.
The landlord, yes. Mm-hmm. I think we could look at this probably maybe next year, but I think we have a lot of projects that we're working on currently that we need to finish at the moment, too, for.
Yeah, and my feeling, too, I think it's a worthwhile program, but if we're going to go with some, we may need to adjust our tax rate, too. Commissioner Gleason.
I attended a Human Relations Committee meeting last week, and this was a topic that was brought up at that meeting. And again, with dealing with the county, again, there's a lot, a lot of different programs that are mentioned in the article that we got from our attorney. And I think that there probably are ways that we could, again, joint venture with the county, with us, in order to, again, come up with a plan that would help more people and be, bring beer stakeholders to the table and, and maybe help move this along. But I know this is a topic that the HRC is, is also looking at.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Wilkins, this was your baby, so I saved you for last so you could hear all the comments.
I thought you were going to forgive me. No.
And, uh, floor is your word, sir.
Low-income housing programs, particularly number one, and I'm really looking at rehabilitated, and I agree with Commissioner Way, I would like us to try to seek federal grant funds and then try to identify those who would fall into this program. And I really would like us not to wait till next year. If we can do this quickly, this fiscal year, I would like to see that done.
Yeah, and I understand your desire to go, but when you're dealing with grants and, and tax money and that type of thing, I'm not sure we can get it done this year.
Yeah, and if we start now, is what I'm saying. Yeah, there you go. Okay, I'm asking. Yep.
All right, sir. All right, let's see. That was low-income housing, uh, 5H. North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality Report on 207 Cozart Street. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you all will recall, that Mr. Moss appeared before our board, I believe it was in the, uh, July meeting and/or the August meeting, and talked to us about the water quality from, the water coming from Sigwassa. I, I mentioned to him all the water quality projects that had been done already and what was still to come, and, um, he appeared before us, and on August fourteenth, DEQ and Sigwassa took water samples from, um, 207 Cozart Street Kitchen, which he reported on social media, media stating the results to follow. And as far as I know, no results have been posted to date. So I'm here to tell you the DEQ results have come in, Sigwassa's results have come in. He reached out to the governor about the water quality on July, on August thirtieth, letting them know that Sigwassa put in an auto flusher. So, um, in addition, Commissioner Wilkins drafted a letter about the water, and we presented it, it was presented to Sigwassa, and I'm happy to report what I already knew, that the results of the water sample by, taken by DEQ and Sigwassa showed no contamination. The levels tested were well within range, and I want you all to remember that the sample was taken before we put in the auto flusher, so it is a clean copy. And the email from Mr. Martinez says, "Good afternoon, I am attaching the results of the sample collected from 207 Cozart Street." And in the letter to the resident at Cozart Street, it said, "Please note that we did not detect any odor or discoloration at the time the samples were taken." So Sigwassa has decided we are going to leave that auto flusher there because it seems to, uh, making the homeowner feel secure, and that we're still trying to do everything we can. But I want them, I want you all to remember, we have a two-hundred and, we have a $250,000 upgrade going in at Lake Rogers at the, um, old booster station, which is not complete yet, which will add chlorine to the water, which we've known the chlorine levels are low, but not in Creedmore. They're low out further towards Wilton. Also want you to know that at our Sigwassa meeting last Tuesday night, the Sigwassa Board approved $225,000 worth of engineering for water quality improvements. So even though this sample came back fine, we are still looking to make sure everybody's sample is fine. We don't have any more samples from anybody else. No one else has reached out to Sigwassa asking for samples. So we don't have anything else to go with it. But I, since Mr. Moss did come to our meeting and present his issue, I wanted the citizens to know that Sigwassa has taken it serious, and we have addressed it, and he addressed it, and we have got it, that any, anything we can do right now has been done. But we are looking forward to about a half a million dollars more of, uh, projects that will improve the water quality better. I'm not sure what that means when we're within our sampling. We've got the PFAS, that's not even included in that half a million dollars. But Sigwassa is doing everything we can, and I wanted to assure everybody that that's exactly what we're doing.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Wilkins?
Madam Mayor, Protem, I'm glad you said what you said until everyone's water, because I'm of the opinion, despite that result, which I'm glad came out fine, if my water has an odor and is discolored, that this result does nothing to appease me or my family. So I think it's important that we not boast, not saying you did, about results until we can assure that everyone's water in Creedmore is free of odor and color. And I don't understand for the life of me why the pump station is still waiting for one vendor to make sure we get chlorine in the water. Is that the only vendor in the country? And I'm asking that if you know, or Mr. Commissioner Way knows.
We entered into a contract with them in February, and they're waiting for flanges. The other equipment has already been installed there, but we're waiting for flanges. And, and the flanges is what they're saying is the supply chain shortage. Believe me, I've argued about it at the meetings. I sent an email, you saw the email, I said the citizens of Creedmore deserve a better service than this. We've even gone into the contract to check to see if there's a penalty clause in the contract, and there is. However, he's not gone past that deadline yet.
But I, I just can't, and I'm no expert, but I can't believe there's only one vendor in this entire country to get that equipment from.
We don't know that, we don't know that there's only one.
Yeah, we asked that, though, and why can't we get it from another?
Sure I can, absolutely.
That's what I'm saying, I mean, why are we waiting on this?
We're putting pressure on the contractor to get it done faster.
Yeah, and he needs to go somewhere else if he can't get it from.
Right, get it from another supplier. Right, I agree. I agree.
Thank you.
Mr. Albright, any questions or comments?
No, no, I'm glad that they came back, um, they came back with no findings. I did, pardon me, I forgot to turn my mic on. I did, however, reply back to the Sigwassa Board and tell them that I was glad that we used to get those information, um, extra in our water that said, you know, we found blah, 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 blah. And we haven't had any of those for years. So to me, that proves that they're working hard and trying to make, you know, good on their promises, and, and I, I currently don't have any complaints about my water, so.
Commissioner Gleason, any comments or questions?
Not at this time.
Commissioner Way?
Just getting back to Commissioner Wilkins, what I have learned of being on the Sigwassa Board, sir, is a lot of our pump stations and things of that nature, for whatever reason, the pumps and things that are used in those pump stations are only provided by people that are local vendor sources, because now they're so antiquated, no one's dealing with that type of equipment anymore. So moving forward, we're going to have equipment where it's not going to be a single-source vendor, is what we're told a lot of times at our meetings, because the certain equipment that needs to be repaired or replaced are single-source vendors. And it's been brought up in those meetings, why is it single-source? And it's been explained to us, the age of the equipment, and a lot of the stuff that we have isn't being new, it's being reconditioned and repaired when we send it off.
Mr. Mayor, ma'am?
Yes, sir.
But I believe the equipment in question at Lake Rogers is only about six years old?
No.
The old, not, the, the equipment we need for the chlorine.
I don't know about the age of what's new, it's just.
Six, eight years old?
What's old, what was there had never been connected. So it's now obsolete, so I don't know how old the new stuff is.
Took it out.
Is it six years old?
I don't know how old it was. I know that they said that everything that we had there for the original system was obsolete and wouldn't be able to work with anything that we have now.
Unbelievable. Thank you. Thank you both.
Yes, sir, you're welcome.
And I'd like to take a moment to thank Mr. Moss for bringing it to forefront. We hear a lot of complaints, but as with not only Mr. Moss's complaint, but the ones we hear really don't need to come to us because we are customers, but come, go to Sigwassa because there's no need for them to hear about how bad the water is on Facebook or whatever. They need to have people come and make a present shown. That's how you get things done. I mean, just hearing about it, but see, if you put the face to it, really makes a difference.
Can I add just one more?
Mayor Protem.
So in response to Commissioner Albright's comment, um, we did some, did some research, and there hasn't been a violation of the water since 2017. So I think that speaks a lot, that we're that many years without any violations. And as far as we need, you know, when you're saying people have odor and discoloration, they need to let, they got to call Sigwassa. If we don't see it, we can't fix it.
All right, thanks, ma'am. All right, we will now move to item 6A, and I will entertain a motion to go into closed session, so now and attorney-client privileges. Motion is made by Commissioner Wilkins. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. We will now go into closed session. If anybody needs to take a break, now would be good to do it.
Good, just roll.